You know, I'm retired, so I missed this whole Zoom thing and I'm just having trouble. I'm sorry.
You're doing just fine.
You're absolutely fine. And again, if we can hear you, if we can't see you, but we can hear you, we're in good shape. We'd love to be able to see you too, but if we can't, that's perfectly acceptable.
Well, thank you so much.
We're here to make the technology work for us during this time, so no worries on that.
Golly, you know, I worked with my daughter this afternoon and we got it to work because I didn't. I've always just gotten, I have a volunteer, I do volunteer work and they always send me a link. And all I got was this ID and I didn't know how to do that either.
It looks to me like your camera may be used by another application on your local computer. But I would suggest that at 6:29, we run with it the way that we have right now and we'll make do.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
Welcome, Member Newman.
Thank you so much. Glad to be here.
Yeah, glad you could join us tonight. We appreciate it. You guys stepping in yourself and Member Shortkey stepping in to help us out tonight. And welcome to your first night on the ZBA, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't worry, this will be an easy one, a good, easy way to get your foot wet.
Perfect.
Hey, Don, how are you?
Hi there. I'm well.
You're here. Nice to hear you. Okay, it is 6:31. Welcome. This is, welcome to the Charter Township Meridian, our zoning board of appeals meeting. Today is March 10th, 2021. It is 6:31 PM and I will now call this meeting to order. Welcome. Ms. LaMell, we ask you to mute just because we're just going to start our meeting here. Yep, there you go. Thank you. All right, our first item for the evening will be to approve our agenda. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to look over that because I know I forgot about that last meeting. Trusty Opsmer.
I will move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any second?
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Member Shortkey. This is going to be a roll call vote. We're going to go ahead and do roll call votes for our two alternate members. Just to remind everyone, we, since we are on Zoom and it's not as easy to tell from the video, I will just vote on each motion. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page and it's recorded properly. All right, Member Shortkey.
Yes.
Trusty Opsmer.
Yes.
Member Newman.
Yes.
Member Colheinek.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So our motion to approve our agenda has passed and we can move on in the agenda. Our next next item on the agenda would be to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Do you have a motion from anyone? Oh, I'll motion, chairable motion to to accept the minutes from the meeting.
I will support that.
And supported by Trusty Opsmer. Member Shortkey.
Yes.
This is, I'm sorry, this is a vote to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Trusty Opsmer.
Yes.
Member Newman.
Yes.
Member Colheinek.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right. I'm moving on in our agenda. Let me pull this up here. Here we go. We do have a couple of communications, it looks like. Keith, do we want to just roll those into our case later?
Yeah, I think there's one, I believe. Was it Mr. Williams? I think his name was, but we can mention it later if you want.
We also, didn't we also have a communication from the HOA?
I think that was included in the packet, but yeah.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, so we will acknowledge the other communication. I'm sorry, just one moment. Sorry about that. My kids decided to choose this moment just to make themselves heard, so excuse my children. Moving on. Since we will acknowledge a communication from Mr. Williams during the presentation, or rather, the HOA during the presentation, and we can talk about Mr. Williams' letter when we are in our board time. We have no unfinished business and so we will move directly into new business, which tonight is ZBA case number 21-03-10-1, LaMell, 5528 Silverleaf Court, Hazlet, Michigan, 48840. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Chapman for his presentation.
Hey, everybody. I'm going to share my screen here. Okay. So the applicant is requesting a variance to enclose an existing unenclosed porch or deck at 5528 Silverleaf Court. This property is located just south of Silverleaf Court and southeast of White Ash Lane. It's zoned RA residential. And the variance request is from Section 86373E5C for lots up to 150 feet in depth. The rear yard setback shall not be less than 30 feet in depth. This is just aerial of the site. So, little bit of overview. There's a single-family house on site that was built in 1998. There's an existing unenclosed porch located on the southwest corner and it measures approximately 12 feet by 18 feet. So the applicant is looking to replace that existing unenclosed porch with a new enclosed porch or three seasons room that is also 12 feet by 18 feet. And this proposed enclosed porch would encroach into the rear yard setback on the property. So the existing unenclosed porch is allowed under Section 86564B to encroach up to eight feet into the rear yard setback. So when the house was built, this was allowed to encroach and it's located 27.8 feet from the rear property line. So it's encroaching 2.2 feet into that rear yard setback. And these are just a couple of pictures. And there's another angle for you. So the variance request is to construct an enclosed porch that will be on top of that existing unenclosed porch. Section 86564C states that enclosed porches should be considered an integral part of the building, thus meeting the dimensional requirements of that building or principal structure. And in this case, that dimensional requirement is the rear yard setback. And the rear yard setback in the RA zoning district is 30 feet for lots up to 150 feet in depth. And in this case, this lot is irregular shaped, but both sides are less than 150 feet. And so this new enclosed porch will be 27.8 feet from that rear property line. So the variance request is for 2.2 feet to encroach into that rear yard setback. This is a drawing that shows the south of the, the south elevation of the three season room. And this is looking east. And this site plan shows the location of the deck here. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We will have time for our board members. We will have time in just a moment to ask Mr. Chapman and other members of staff questions. But for now, is the applicant or applicant's representative here tonight? I believe we have Ms. LaMell. I will just ask you to state your name, your full name and your address for the record. And then anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Chapman said. You are muted though. Go ahead and unmute yourself, Ms. LaMell. You're still, you're still on mute. Put your little microphone there in your left-hand corner.
Got it. I'm sorry. I'm just not used to this.
It's all right. It's all right. We're all learning. It's okay.
Okay.
You are, you have the floor. Please give us your name and your full address for the record, please.
Marsha LaMell, 5528 Silverleaf Court, Hazlet, Michigan, 48840.
And you can go ahead and add anything you'd like to add to what Mr. Chapman said or if you have anything else that you'd like us to know about the variance request.
Well, the porch faces a wooded area, which is part of wetland. So it doesn't encroach on any neighbors at all. The other thing is that there is a Chippewa, it's part of Chippewa Woods subdivision and there is a homeowners association that requires, you know, approval for any construction outside of the home. I went through that process. They have an architectural committee of the homeowners association. It went through the architectural committee with all of the design elements and everything. And then it went to the board of directors and it has been approved by the Chippewa Woods homeowners association. So there's that. I really, I really think that this will enhance my house in the value and also the neighborhood. There are a lot of houses in this neighborhood that have three and four season rooms. I don't know if they were developed with, when the house was built or if they were added, but a lot of them don't look to be 30 feet from property lines. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that there's, there really is any impediment in terms of the neighborhood. And with full support of the homeowners association, I feel good about that. I am new to Michigan, relatively new. I moved here from Nebraska. I've always had a three season room, but it's even more important now as I've gotten older and have some limitations and during the quarantine, for me to have some outside space and outside air. So I'm really hoping that this can be approved so that I can get it built hopefully this summer, at least sometime this summer. I think that's all. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, please, please stand by and we will, like, they'd be asking you some questions as we go through this as a board. Thank you very much, Ms. LaMell. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case this evening? Sometimes we do have people. I don't see anybody in attendee. I see one person attendees, but no other hands raised. In that case, we will go ahead and get started with board time.
Chairman Sur, I will remind that if people wanted to comment from the public and are watching via home TV, we can accept calls at 517-349-1232. And we do have that one person in the attendee area who can use the raise hand feature in the meeting itself if they'd care to make public comment at this time. I've paused long enough that I'm not hearing any telephones ringing, so I'll return the meeting to you and apologize for the interruption.
Oh, thank you. We really appreciate your hard work and helping us to make the meeting successful to everyone at home. Thank you so much. On that note, we will go ahead and get into our board time. At this point, anyone have any questions? We can speak to staff. We can speak to Ms. LaMell, anyone at all, and we will work our way through our criteria. So. Trusty Opsmer.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Sur. Do you guys know if we have any other area trimmers that had a rear yard setback in this neighborhood? Or is that something that you guys studied?
Is that a question maybe from Director Kieselbach or Mr. Chapman?
Sorry, you broke up on me there.
Yeah, I think the gist I kind of heard was, do we have any other cases in this neighborhood that have the same issue?
I haven't seen any recently that I know of. Yeah, I mean, from what I can tell, it looks like most of the houses have decks, but other than that, I don't know of any other variances.
Okay. And then my other question was, looking at the site plans for the home, and I do apologize, I have a little bit of background noise. I'm also caring for my son this evening. The deck, it appears juts out from that southernmost wall on the home. Is that extension of the deck from that southernmost wall, is that basically the two feet, three inches that we're talking about?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So one of the things that I guess that stands out to me with this is I see the supports, the vertical supports beneath the rim joists of the deck currently are, you know, it's not cantilevered, so the supports are all the way out at the end. So in order to conform, the applicant would have to demolish the deck and reconstruct it because the support system itself is in that area in question. So that's one thing that I just wanted to confirm, but stood out to me in the application. Thank you.
That's essentially the reason for the variance, that would be prohibitive to start all over.
Thank you. Really good point. I do, I did make a note of that myself as we were listening to the presentation, that it does appear that without building exactly as the structure is, you would have to tear out that entire structure and rebuild completely in order to conform. So I do see that as being, could be a practical difficulty there. Do we have any, anyone else that has a question or any comments or thoughts? I will say, one, one thing that stood out to me is that this, this is, is conforming unenclosed, but would be non-conforming and does require the variance if it is enclosed because it's considered principal structure. That's, is that correct?
Yes.
Kieselbach, yeah.
Yes.
So in that way as well, I do see that we have a structure that's already there. We have a homeowner who's willing to put money into making it a, to improving the property in a way and the practical difficulty of not, of needing to remove that entire structure in order to conform by two feet. So I do see a, I do see a minimum action here, which is a variance, really what we're, what we're being requested to approve here is two feet into the rear yard setback with approval from the HOA, with a letter of support from neighbors, with the understanding that this is, this is already an existing structure. It will just be a, an enclosed structure versus an unenclosed structure. And for that reason, I think I'm fairly confident that we could start going through the criteria. If nobody else has any pressing questions for staff or for...
I mean,
Yeah, go ahead.
This is, this is done. I, I'm hearing what you're saying and certainly we'll go through the criteria. But I guess my concern, I live on a street not unlike this, where everybody has a deck off the back, is, you know, where are we, where exactly are we drawing the line here? I understand this is an existing deck and there's probably a number of existing decks that people would like to enclose that might encroach into that 30-foot setback. And you know, again, I think we can go through the criteria, but that's, therein lies my concern. This one seems very minimal when we look at it. It's just a couple of feet and a handsome proposed improvement, but but with many, many decks in the zoning district and probably in that neighborhood. I guess the notion that people can come forward and say, well, I have a deck. Now I just want to enclose it. And it's, would be cost prohibitive for me to modify that deck in some way. It just seems like it really opens a bit of a door.
I might, I might throw in that this is a really winding neighborhood and most of the homes back onto a woods, but everybody's area behind their house to their, you know, to the lot line is very different. Mine is larger than most. You know what I mean? They're, they're all different yard sizes. And because it's very winding, it's, they're really irregular as well. I don't know if that makes a difference, but they don't all conform.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. LaMell. I think that I definitely appreciate the, the kind of perspective on the neighborhood. And I think what Member Colheinek is getting to is that, is, is that approving a variance in this neighborhood, does that open up, you know, because they are, I think the, the hard part is because they are various shaped lots, does that open up more casework necessarily for us if we say, oh yeah, we approve this? Does that give, you know, license to have a lot of other things approved? But I think if you don't mind, Member Colheinek, let's, I think that, that we can kind of bring that back up when we're getting into criteria six and seven, maybe even practical difficulties, because I do think that you have a, have a point about practical difficulties here. So let me, let me get started if you don't mind and we'll get back into that in just a moment. Because I think as we get started, I think there's some that are pretty, pretty basic and we can have a little bit further discussion there. Our first criteria is unique circumstances exist that are peculiar to the land or structure that are not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district. So I, I would, I would be able to confirm that I do think that this is unique. I do think that as we look at that, those, those lots, all in that sub, each and every one of those parcels is a unique shape. Just based on that alone, I do think that this is a unique lot. I do think that I, I mean, obviously, I do not think these are self-created. I mean, this was, this is a, as it was developed, not as it was made by the, by the property owner. So I could, I could meet both criteria one and criteria two, the special circumstances are not self-created. Criteria three, strict interpretation enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties. And I think, Member Colheinek, it sounds like that's kind of where you're starting to get a little, where, where that's not as solid of a case, which I do understand. So let's talk about it. What constitutes a practical difficulty? In this case, I think Member Opsmer or Trusty Opsmer, go ahead.
Sure, and I'm going to turn my video off to try to improve my audio quality.
Sure.
My son is streaming videos right now, so.
Understandable.
So again, I kind of come back to the supports on the existing deck because if the, if it was cantilevered and the support system for the deck were inside, were compliant, then the joist could just be cut down and, you know, you could bring it into compliance readily, fairly easily. But in this circumstance, you basically have to demo the deck. And so when I look at unique circumstances that exist to the structure, specifically, not so much the land, I think there's, there's odd angles throughout the entire neighborhood, but the structure itself, there are unique circumstances because it could, there are many decks that are cantilevered where the deck would, you know, hang out a foot and a half over the structure. And if this had been engineered slightly differently, we might not be looking at a two-foot, three-inch setback. So I do think that is a unique circumstance. Thank you.
I do have a question for Ms. LaMell. As we talk about practical difficulties, can you perhaps talk to us a little bit about your, the process of coming up with these plans? And did you ever consider bringing it in at all so that it would be in, within our ordinance or was that just, where, where did the decision-making process? I certainly don't want to put words in your mouth. So if you could walk us through a little bit more of the process.
I understand. You get into all kinds of things with the structure, the support of the structure. What you would need to do, I guess, is bring the structure in two feet and then have a two-foot external part, because you need, you know, as was just explained, because of the way it was built, you need the whole structure. So we did look at that and it just didn't make much sense and it would look kind of weird. I mean, it would be a useless two feet of the open deck space, I guess you would call it, which wasn't very appealing to the homeowners association board either. Did I answer your question?
I think so. I was trying to look at my, I was trying to keep you on my screen and look at, look at the plans there as well at the same time. I think it does answer to a certain degree. Let me see if I can, if, if, Keith, do you think, do you have the, the structural drawing that you can pull up? I just, I just want to make sure that we're on the same page with this because what I'm hearing is that the, the building alternative to this, to keep within code and compliance would be, okay, thank you. That's perfect. Okay, would be where this, where this exterior, this, this post is, to bring that back and bring the enclosed back, but then, or are you saying that it would be to leave this post exterior and bring the interior forward two feet? So you would just have blank, non-built space?
Yes, that, that's what we considered because it would also be really expensive to start moving. It's not just one post, to start moving posts. And I don't know about the structural integrity. We would have to look into that, but it just didn't make sense to me and just would cost more money and look funny.
All right. I think, I, I think I have a handle on, on the decision-making process. I do, I do feel when I look at this, this is, this is a minimal action. I mean, we're talking about two feet that is already there. This isn't two feet that we're creating, that we're going further into, that's two feet already exists. It's in compliance at the moment. It's, it would be not in compliance if it was enclosed, but the act of enclosing the porch doesn't add to anything that doesn't already exist or any further. It's, it just happens to be the enclosed versus expo.
That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, I think, I think I understand that now. I think, so in, in, in talking more about that, criteria three is strict interpretation and enforcement of the, does any other, is there any other board member that has any questions or is looking at this and having any other thoughts about this in particular? I don't want to step over anybody and it's hard to see everybody when we're, when we're in share screen mode. Okay. Okay, I'm going to then, criteria three, strict interpretation and enforcement of the literal terms and provisions of this chapter would result in practical difficulties. I will say, and it's, and it's always a good thing to remember in our proceedings, that we can't take finances into consideration. That's not what we're here for. We're here to interpret the ordinance and see if it's, if it makes sense based on these eight criteria. And unfortunately, finances do not constitute practical difficulties. We understand, because we call our, our homeowners and property owners our own rights. But unfortunately, we don't take that into consideration. And this is something also to apply across the board, whether it's to businesses, to, you know, residences, to, you know, rental properties, et cetera. So for me, the practical difficulty really is that this is already an existing structure. The practical difficulty of literally having to build a new structure that is already in compliance to comply by two feet. I find that to be excessive and not within the spirit of the ordinance, meaning that, I mean, this is, this I, I don't feel that this opens up a broad band, you know, welcome to the, to the ZBA, come get your deck approved, because I do think this is a unique circumstance. It's a very minimal amount that we're being asked to approve. And so again, that practical difficulty that I'm citing is literally just the existing structure being there and having to destroy it and because it's an existing structure to conform by a very minimal amount. Does anybody want to discuss that one? It would be the strict interpretation or any, anybody having any any thoughts about practical difficulties? Yes, Trustee.
Member Cole Hanek can go first.
No, I wasn't, I, I'm not sure I had anything really substantial to say. I, I, I think I still have the same concern. I'm, I hear what you're saying, and it's very, very small, and you don't see this as necessarily opening the door to more of these kinds of applications. And I'm thinking about it, for lack of a better, and I look forward to what Member Opsmer might say next, but it's, it's another interesting cases, man.
Yep. Trustee Opsmer, go ahead. Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, so I just had a question for staff as it relates to this and the intent of the ordinance. So as it relates to strict interpretation of this chapter, Keith and Mark, I'm sorry, I've got quite a bit of background noise from my son. As it relates to strict interpretation of this chapter, what is the public intent of treating enclosed decks different from an open and exposed deck? I'm just curious, not having done a case like this, and I'm just wondering historically with the ordinance, what our intent was. Because when I was thinking about it this afternoon, the, the pro that I see with the enclosure is noise pollution being retained on site. Obviously, exposed decks, you know, are, you're going to have noise traveling further in the neighborhood. I, I didn't quite see the drawbacks, so I wasn't sure if it was just that, you know, we typically start with model ordinances, and if it's got a roof over it, then it gets treated like, you know, a core component of the dwelling unit versus if it doesn't.
Yeah, you're right. The intent of the ordinance is that at some point, as you start enclosing these decks, putting a roof over them, putting walls up that you've basically added on to the structure and it becomes part of the principal structure. Certainly, they could at some time, you know, enclose the lower level and finish it, put heat in it, put electric and water to it. So the idea is it's going to eventually become part of the house, or could become part of the house. So that was the reason for the setback and the section of the ordinance that requires that.
And they would have to get building permits to fully fully make it part of the dwelling unit to put HVAC and everything else in.
Yeah.
Okay. And would there be? What would that process look like with your office and the building department to get those permits?
Well, you know, originally, this was, this came to the building department, the contractor for the homeowner submitted it, and then it was caught that was going to be part of the principal house and didn't meet the setback. So again, if they come back for plumbing, electric, heating or air, those are all permits through our department or any structural changes for that.
Would have to come back to the ZBA.
If you grant this variance, then at that, with that 2.2, as long as they maintain that, they someday probably could enclose that lower level, and we wouldn't bring them back to the zoning board of appeals. Unless you wanted to condition it that it was only for this upper level.
Could I make a distinction here between a three-season room and a four-season room? This is for a three-season room that will not have heating or air conditioning or plumbing.
But it's roofed and it becomes part of the house.
Right.
Is the issue. I should also mention, as you were talking, those support posts, the contractor is going to have to verify the integrity of those posts, that they can hold that additional weight for this roofed area. So those may have to be changed out.
What, what the contractor is saying is that they, that he may need to add one. Or to dig down and put more concrete in, and we, we don't know that yet.
Yeah, that will be a call that from the building inspectors.
Correct.
Thank you, Trustee Opsmer, that was, that was really helpful. I think, so Director Kieselbach, if they do need to have those posts replaced, I think we're, we're, that's, that's where, that's where I'm going to get now into Member Cole Hanek's gray area here with, with him. Because if those posts are not structurally, structurally sound, and they do need to be replaced, they could be moved in. And I mean, if they, if they have to be replaced anyways, then that would be, that would not require a variance. They could just bring it in the two feet and not require the variance. So is that, is that a condition we could put on that?
If, if you want, yes, you can. Again, until we have more information and the building inspector is able to look at it, we don't know about those posts. Those posts may be fine as, as they are right now.
Okay.
Two, two contractors have said that they're fine, that there may be a need for an additional one or for, if they dig down to put more concrete in, in the hole, but that the posts are fine. At least that's what they're telling me.
Thank you, Ms. Lamell. And that would be verified, Director Kieselbach, by building inspectors at the time of the time, the initial, the initial permit was released or the time that the final inspections were approved?
No, they're going to, they're going to ask for information from the contractor to justify that the post can hold the additional weight. They'll probably go out and look at it and maybe meet the contractor on site to determine that before the permits issued.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate that. Okay, well, in that case, does anybody have any further thoughts on practical difficulties? Because I think that, that certainly enlightened me a little bit on the, my argument being that they, these posts are in existence, this deck is in existence, and just needs to be enclosed, but there is the potential there that they would need to be replaced. We can add that condition. As Director Kieselbach said, we can approve the variance with the condition that if the posts do need to be replaced, that they come within compliance and, but that's certainly something to think about. Moving on to criteria number four, that the alleged practical difficulties, which will result from a failure to grant the variance, would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose. This is always going to be our hardest criteria to pass, and this is the, this is the one that personally I don't, I don't have a rock-solid case for. I do, I do understand, and I think Ms. Lamell gave us a really good kind of picture of that, how that would improve not only the property, but her lifestyle. It would, you know, but it, does this, without, without enclosing the deck, does this permit prevent the owner from using the property for permitted purpose? And I don't, I don't see that one. So does anybody, anybody have anything to add or any, anyone feel like convincing us otherwise?
This is Don, I just want to, if you can hear me, I, I just want to say I, I agree. I know the house is obviously already being used and is for its permitted purpose. And again, this would be a nice enhancement to the house. But I can't see where, where this denial is going to unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for its purpose. It's, it's currently being used for its permitted purpose.
Wow. I bought the house intending to do this because it's very important to me, and I've had it, I've had a three-season room in my house for probably thirty years. That would be a significant issue for me not to have one.
I just, 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 Ms. Lamell, so you know, we, when we go through these, we really, we really try our hardest. The unfortunate thing is our criteria are, are the criteria, they don't change from case to case. But we do, in our deliberations, need to find justification in those things, which the language is really strong for a reason to make it, to make each case really truly worthy of having those variance requests. So when we say the, it would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for their permitted purpose. So the permitted purpose in this case would be a residential home. Does it, I, I, again, I, I hear your, your perspective and, and very much understand your perspective, that this would enhance and your, not only your home, its value, but also your, your lifestyle, the challenges that would, are you able to still have that same home without the enclosed porch? And that's where, that's where we have to discuss and figure out if, if as our zoning board of appeals board, we can reasonably accept that those, those reasons, do we find cause for those reasons? So it's, it, please understand it's not personal, it's just
I know, I know that, and I understand.
Then we, we try our hardest to, to be fair. But that's, yeah, that's, that's the one, that's, this is, this is the one that we get stuck on the most for all, for all of our cases, because we really need to be, we really do need to be fair and make sure that we're, we are really looking at these as carefully as possible. So anyone else have a, anything to add to number four, or we can come back to number four? Why don't we go on to number five, and we come, come back to number four. Criteria five is granting the variance is the minimum action that will make possible the use of the land or structure in a manner which is not contrary to the public interest, and which would carry out the spirit of this zoning ordinance, secure public safety and provide substantial justice. I could very easily make a case for that. This is, we're talking about two feet. So this one, I have no problem with truly, you know, meeting that criteria. Anyone have anything to add on number five? Trustee Opsmer.
I would concur with the chair and also just add that I do think, and I'm still a little confused on the intent of the ordinance, I do think it's an enhancement for the neighbors next door in terms of the noise containment. I get staff's interpretation of, you know, it could be a slippery slope towards basically putting in addition, four-season addition on the home down the line, which if I'm hearing correctly, we could condition. But I do think there is a public benefit to not only the homeowner, but to the adjacent homeowners.
Yeah, and that would cover our criteria six, which would be granting the variance will not adversely affect adjacent land or the essential character in the vicinity of the property, which I, I agree, I think that this enhances not only the property, but the, but the the character of the neighborhood and the subdivision here. I agree with it, with the noise. I mean, and the, again, the tricky part is that we have to remember these variances carry over. So when and if Ms. Lamell was to sell the house, the variance would go, goes with the house. So on the next person who, you know, does make, come in and buy the home and decide to enclose those areas, that is kind of the, you know, where they're saying that's kind of the slippery slope there where that could be enclosed. And but that's something we can, we can condition. Criteria number seven, the conditions pertaining to the land or structure are not so general or recurrent in nature as to make the formulation of a general regulation for such conditions practicable. I, I really don't believe that. I don't, we haven't seen any cases from this sub in particular that I can recall. We do have several of these shaped, oddly shaped parcels, subdivisions within Meridian Township. So these do come up from other areas of the township. But I, they're, they're not often. And I do very much understand what Member Cole Hanek is saying, not wanting to, to be too free with granting these variances to make it as if the, that it's easy to get a a variance for this type of building. But the, again, as I was trying to explain to Ms. Lamell, we have to take each case individually as well and look at each case's special circumstances each time. So I do, I, I think that we just need to consider that too, that we, each, each case is different. And each board is different, you know, tonight we have two of our alternate members here. We have Trustee Opsmer is here for a second meeting, you know, I mean, we, we have a different makeup of, of board members as well. So, you know, I, I do think that we, we always make great decisions, but I do think that there, there are differences when, when we do have these various cases come before us. So I don't, I don't think that it's a, it's a matter of opening the door to a lot of different people in the same area. But I do understand where that, that kind of thought would, would be, would come from. Finally, criteria number eight, granting the variance will be generally consistent with public interest and with the purposes and intent of this chapter. I think Trustee Opsmer touched on this quite a bit, the purposes and intent of this ordinance. I do think that if we were to move forward, I would, I would feel more comfortable conditioning it as staying a three-seasons room as opposed to and, and putting that condition on the variance so that we, in going forward, whether it's Ms. Lamell, whether it's another property owner, that we condition it to say that this is to remain an enclosed porch if any further, any further improvements or any further inclosurement, turning it into, you know, a fully integrated part of the home would need to come back before the ZBA approval. So I don't know how the rest of you feel about that, but that is just an idea I'm thinking where I could get a little bit more comfortable with approving. Member Shorkey, go ahead.
I would also like to add to that, it came up earlier in the conversation, the possibility of enclosing the entire thing. If we just blanket, give a 2.2-foot variance, the whole thing could be enclosed. I would like, I would I would like, I would have a lot less heartburn with this. If, if this variance applied to the upper deck only, and any further enclosure below on the ground level would require another variance.
Okay. I, I definitely could get behind that as well. I could even, does, I mean, I, I think we need to circle back to criteria four because I think that's the only thing that's preventing me from, from putting forth a motion to approve. So I would love to hear thoughts on, on unreasonably preventing the property from being used. I don't know where everybody else is kind of, where they're leaning here, but that's, that's where I'm still having, having some trouble coming, coming to a yes vote.
Hello, this is Don again.
Go ahead.
Hi there. Yeah. I, you know, I've listened carefully to everything everybody said. And, you know, we don't have to be unanimous. You already know that when we go through and, and do these things. And, you know, I read the criteria. I guess I won't read it again. And, and I don't think I'm really have to repeat my explanation again. My opinion really hasn't changed. This is a single family house in a single family district that's currently being used that way. And, and this is, you know, a wonderful potential enhancement, but I can't say that this, that this property is, is not being used for its permitted purpose. And you know, for that reason, I, I'm not going to be able to, to vote in favor of this. I, I also have problems still with criteria number three. You know, this, this could be built two feet smaller and I, the explanations that we've heard regarding potential modifications as well. As this moves forward, I think there's, there's a good deal of uncertainty there. But when I look at the schematic that we have and I see how expensive this is going to be, I'm no builder or anything, but I'm, I'm not thinking that this is, should be a make or break two feet for this addition. And it's an addition. And if, if, if it was two, what, two point two feet smaller, no variance, I believe is needed. And, and I guess that's what I would suggest. But with regard to criterias three and four, I don't think I'm going to be convinced otherwise at this point. And that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Member Paul Heineck, for your honesty and definitely for, for sharing perspective. I do, I, I tend to agree with you still on, on criteria number four. So that's, that's still where I'm coming into, where I'm coming into issues. Any of our other three members, do you, how, how are you feeling? But I mean, if, if you're on the, on the edge on, on criteria three or four as well, I would, I would love to know thoughts. Yeah, Member Shorkey, go ahead.
I'm gonna give you an argument that maybe a little bit of interpretate, liberal interpretation, okay?
Go for it. I like.
Yeah. When, I'm just looking through the language and when it says, I'm looking at number four. Result, you know, if we, failure to grant variance would, would, would prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose. Okay? The permitted purpose, it's permitted to have enclosed porches. Not talking about the principal structure itself, you know, the, I'm, you can, you know, again, this is just, just a, maybe some linguistics here, but the porch is part of the structure, but it's not the principal structure. An enclosed porch is considered under the same setbacks granted, but it's, it's, I'm reading on, in, in, let's say on page two of the report, under the, under the picture, once the porch is enclosed, it is required to meet principal building setback requirements. Therefore, maybe you can think of these, of the enclosed porch as a permitted use that's allowed as part of a print, as a principal structure. If that, if that helps you, you see what I mean?
I'm not quite there. Wait, okay, so.
You know, an ordinance might say accessory buildings are allowed as, if you have a principal structure in place. In this case, while an enclosed porch isn't a standalone accessory structure, it's certainly not a garage. It's not a shed or anything like that. The language addresses an enclosed porch separate from a principal structure and says, an enclosed porch shall be considered for purposes of setbacks, the same as a principal structure. So maybe, you know, the ordinance sees them as two separate uses and you might, might think of an enclosed porch as an accessory use to permitted use because you can't have an enclosed porch if you don't have the home in the first place. I'm not a hundred percent buying into that argument, but it is, I thought it was worth bringing up. It's, it's an argument.
Interesting. Okay. I, I guess I, I have a further question of clarification for either Director Kieselbach or Mr. Chapman, where, when I'm reading ordinance here that says enclosed porch is either one story, two story, or an unenclosed porch having solid foundations. So solid foundations would be the, would be the lower level. Is that correct? Is this considered solid foundations that it's on these pillars or where, where does, where, where is it different, differentiated between the unenclosed porch and the enclosed porch? And capable of being enclosed? Because it appears actually in reading the language a little bit more closely that in and of itself as it is now, because it is an unenclosed porch that is capable of being enclosed, wouldn't this already be considered nonconforming then?
No. The way the ordinance was written is to allow a homeowner to have a porch. Or, and you know, that's old terminology and most people are gonna say a, a deck. You know, so that was the idea that you can have that unenclosed deck as part of that. In fact, they give you an exception to allow you to extend a porch out further than the principal structure. It's at the time somebody decides to start making that as whether it's roofed or you put up walls and start to enclose it, that the idea is that, that eventually you should meet the same setback as the principal structure because at some point it could be more habitable space. It could be considered part of the principal structure. So I think it's this, you know, we're still talking the same setback, once you enclose it the way the ordinance is written.
Okay. So e, so in and of itself, the fact that it is unenclosed, it meets a setback requirement, even though this portion of the ordinance is stating that an unenclosed porch having solid foundations incapable of being enclosed shall be considered an integral part of the building and shall therefore be subject to all yard and area dimensional requirements established for principal buildings. So we, because, because we're looking at this as right now, it's conforming. But so the, so the unenclosed porch having solid foundations and capable, capable of being enclosed portion is just for, it's not for as it exists at this moment, it's just with the potential. So the potential in and of itself changes it to being nonconforming.
Right.
Okay. So that's, yeah, that's a little tricky. Trusty, go ahead. Director Kieselbach.
Well, I just want to clarify, you know, again, they, if it meant the same setback as principal structure, it wouldn't need a variance. It would need a building permit to enclose it, but it wouldn't need the setback variance. And that, and typically on solid foundation, you're looking at, if this was habitable space, you'd have a continuous foundation.
Okay. Okay. So there's some, there's, there's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's this very small kind of very specific, this very, very specific part of that ordinance that directly applies to cases exactly like this.
Yeah.
Okay. Trusty Opsmer, I think I saw your hand.
Yeah. So my interpretation of what Mark is saying is it's the slippery slope of what this could be. So once we enclose it, then, you know, we create other subsequent steps that can be taken simply by pulling building permits. And I'm not hearing that staff has much discretion at that point. But our option is to condition it, as Member Shorkey stated and Chair Mansour stated, you know, we could condition both below and the above in terms of restricting HVAC and full enclosure on the above structure and restricting enclosure below, which is currently completely open. So that would give me a lot more comfort with it. I'm new to the ZBA, so I, I don't, I haven't, I've certainly watched some meetings, but I haven't seen cases like this as it relates to permitted purposes. But for me, if I'm looking at this from a practicality standpoint, I, I think one of the other big purposes of protecting the thirty foot setback, rear yard setback for residential homes is to protect that buffer when you have rear yards adjacent to one another. And in this case, we have open space adjacent and we have a wooded area. And due to the nature, the unique nature of the land and the adjacent uses, we know that no home is going to be built adjacent to, you know, we're not going to have two rear yards abutting here. This is going to be a cul-de-sac. And the land next door isn't going to be changed in use in that manner. So I think that's one other special consideration. As it relates to permitted purposes, I guess I, I don't know how the ZBA has historically interpreted that, especially in cases like this, but it is a three season room. I don't know if we're strictly saying that permitted purpose is simply that the home would not be inhabitable because that's really the purpose of residential. But if we're looking at the permitted purpose of the deck, you know, three season rooms are popular in Michigan for a reason and in Meridian Township due to insects, mosquitoes, and then of course weather conditions for most of the year. So, but I don't really know what interpretation has been applied to that. But that's something that comes to my mind as a lay for the homeowner on that one because I, most people would reasonably assume that this could be enclosed. And that two feet, three inches is tough, but the predominant factors for me are constraining it and preventing the slippery slope and the unique circumstances of not, it's not encroaching on another rear setback of another yard. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely agree and I, and I appreciate it. And, and don't think we forgot about you, Member Newman, because we want to hear your thoughts too. But it's, it is, it is tricky because we do, even as much as I could say one way or another, what we've allowed or what's been historical, it's still, again, is going to change based on the case. I mean, I don't think that I could see a precedent really. I, I mean, I, I can tell you now that we've had, we've had decks and, and porches and enclosures that we have not approved. But I, I think there's a way to really look at this. And I think it's an approach that Member Paul Heineck and myself right now are both kind of guilty of, is looking at it as the permitted purpose would be a, a livable home. But I think there is probably more, more to that than what I'm really thinking of, which is that you're also buying the land, right? You're, you're, you, you own this piece of property. It's not just a home that you own. She owns the home, she owns the land, she came with the deck. It's, it's, it's a full, full property. So using the property for a permitted purpose, I, I do think there, there are some, there is some give there with what the permitted purpose for the use of the property is. I definitely agree. And again, we, we, we joke too about garages because we're in Michigan. So we know in Michigan, we're going to get snow, we're going to get rain, we're going to get bugs. You know, we have like, those are our three seasons, right? So, but beyond that, it's, it's what, whether or not the property can be used is, I, I think maybe, it may be a better way to look at this one is whether it can be fully used to the full extent of what the homeowner or property, what they would like, what they would like to be able to do with the property. Member Newman, join us. Come on in, welcome.
Yeah. Thank you all for your thoughts. So I guess digesting this, I, unfortunately, I, I keep kind of going back to a comment that Member Paul Heineck made. And that's, that's, you know, we're not, we would, if, you know, if we did turn this down, we wouldn't be turning down the fact that a three seasons room could be built, right? We would be essentially saying that you have, you can build it, but it has to be two inches and two feet, three inches smaller. And I guess being in the, I mean, my, so my major is construction management. I'm in the construction industry. So it's, I, I understand what it would take to, you know, as unfortunate as it would be, but you know, you put four more posts in, two feet, three inches back. But I, yeah, I am, I am pretty hung up on, on, on that. It's, you know, we're not, we're not saying that you can't build a three seasons room. We would essentially be saying it's got to be two feet, three inches smaller. And probably mostly for, for number four, I guess, I interpreted the permitted use as kind of what you were just saying. The, that it's a, it's a residential home. So yeah, those are, those are kind of my thoughts right now.
Appreciate that. It's, it's, it's nice to have a, have a construction perspective from you and from Trusty Opsmer. That is very helpful. I know Member Shorkey comes to us with some, some planning and, you know, perspective, right?
Chairman, can I ask a question?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Ms. LaMell.
Okay. So the, the way that I thought about it when I bought the house was that the, the distance, or when I started this project, the distance to the end of your, your land is, I mean, what is the reason for that? I mean, what, is that, to me, that's because you might have neighbors backyards facing yours. And you don't want to be in somebody else's space. But if the back of your house is all woods, what would prevent you from building all the way back to the woods?
Well, I think that's, that, well, what prevents you from building all the way back to the woods is the setbacks.
I, I understand that, but I mean, from a practical point of view, the whole reason for that is so that you don't encroach upon neighbors, right? Is there any other reason?
Well, I think in the township as well, we have a very strong history of land preservation, of conservation. So I do think that that's part of, that's part of the ordinance and the spirit of the chapter as well is to protect and preserve as much land and green space as we can as a township. So I do think that that, that has a lot to do with those setbacks. We have a lot of wetlands. We have a lot of wildlife habitats. We have a lot of reasoning for not encroaching as much as, you know, up, abutting those natural areas.
And I think that's wonderful. That's one of the things that is, is really nice about Michigan. But in this case, that doesn't apply. It's on a second level. It isn't encroaching at all. So I, I would just make that point that, you know, I, I really understand the reason for that setback. So I, I would just make that point, that, you know, I, I really understand the reason for that setback. But primarily, that reason would be not to encroach on neighbors. In this case, it certainly doesn't. And as far as setting precedent, I understand that you need to be concerned about that. But going through the requirements of the Homeowners Association was a very long process. Um and I, any other neighbors who wanted to do anything like this would have to go through that process as well. And the, the um Homeowners Association is very concerned about, you know, keeping the look of the neighborhood. So I would just throw those two things in. It, it just seems, I don't know, it, I mean, to me, and I'm not having to deal with all the things that you're dealing with and all the precedents, but it seems to me that this is just a nothing burger. I mean, it's, it's on the second level, it's two feet, it's what I wanted to buy the house for. Um and to me, it's very much a part of the whole purpose of this domicile. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
And I know that doesn't meet your requirements or your criteria, it doesn't help you, but it's, it just seems, it just seems such a simple deal to me.
I know, it's, it's, it is, this is, this is a challenging one. This is, this is not an easy one. I
I know.
Leave me when I oh no, this is, this is an easy one. It's, it's not. And we do, we do, again, try to take uh, try to take as much into consideration as possible. I, I, I hear um what Ms. Lamell is saying regarding the setbacks and I, and I don't have um any um, I, I'm in agreement. I don't think that that's an issue here. I do, I do, and, and still just hung up on, on our uh criteria number four. So with that being said, it doesn't, I don't think that it seems like anybody is moving either way on that one. So um does anybody have a motion? Does anybody want to keep going on number four? Or um, you know, I, I, I'm open to uh what, what the uh remainder of the board is uh thinking on this one.
Also, I have no intention of building below the deck. I, and that would be fine if you wanted to make that a one of the requirements.
Yeah, I do, I do, I do um hope you understand too that one of, one of the biggest challenges truly is that these variances stay with the house. So when and if you sell, this variance goes to the next person and we can't guarantee the same intention. So we're, we, we're happy to have you with us today, Ms. Lamell. But we, uh the, the hardest part about that is these variances last in perpetuity. This, this goes with this, with this home as long as it's in existence. So we do have to consider that your intentions are, are, you know, valiant and, and fair. But um we can't speak for any potential future um homeowners or property owners, so.
So you would be worried that they would expand it further?
Yeah, and I, and I do think that um a- as um Director Kieselbach explained, that that is, that is most, most of the intent of the um ordinance here is that um to prevent that slippery slope of enclosing and um expanding homes um into those setbacks that are there to protect our, you know, not only the, you know, neighbors and the, as we've already talked about, setbacks exist. But um that without, with this variance, somebody could just go to the building department and get, get permits to put in HVAC plumbing, et cetera, and pulling clothes in and add it, add on to their home um without needing any further variance. And that in and of itself is the slippery slope that.
But once the walls are up, what difference would that make?
Um that would, that would be, I mean, first of all, for tax, tax reasons, you know, that would, that would be increasing the square footage of the home, which would then need to be reassessed, which would then need to be taxed. Um I mean, there, there's a, there's a litany of things that I think could, could follow from that. Um but I don't really want to get hung up on that as, as much.
That wouldn't change the variance. I mean,
No, and that's
Once the walls go up, it, you, you know, if you have two extra feet, the walls are there.
Right, but then as soon as, again, once you said, when you were very clear that you were talking about a three-season room versus a four-season room, once the walls are up, it's, it, it's going to the building department and saying, oh, I want to put, I want to put HVAC and I need a, I need a plumbing uh permit and I need a, an electrical and I need a um HVAC permit and I have a larger house now and that's, that's a different that's not what the, what this particular variance is for. That's what we're trying to be clear on.
Okay, it's just for a th- three-season room, which is what I'm going to build. I mean, that's no problem with that.
Right, I think we're just all trying to make sure that if that was the case, that we would be very clear on that so that it, it wouldn't be further developed into um that and, and would need to come before the, the board if something else was gonna, was going to be added to. So I, I, I will just say to the remainder of the board members, um I, if, if anybody has a motion, I'm, I'm all for hearing those. Member Shorkey.
I haven't been in many of these meetings, but this is the most divided, I feel like I've seen us. So in light of that, I'll throw it out there. Make a motion that we approve the two-foot, three, the, the two-point-two-foot variance for this three-season room with the condition, with two conditions. One, any building permit application for HVAC plumbing, HVAC or plumbing or electrical will trigger a review of this application with the possible revocation. And two, this variance shall apply only to the current upper, you know, current upper story deck. And any attempt to enclose anything on the ground level will result in a new variance application. Does that get to the points you were raising earlier? Chair. You're muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Yes, that, that addresses the, the concerns that I had. I would, um, I would ask Director Kieselbach if that satisfies um the scope of what we were talking about. If that would, um, if that is enough of a condition to put on that this would not be able to be enclosed as a um four-seasons room or as an, as a room addition to the home. Does that, does that cover our bases or do we need any further language there?
No, I, I think it covers your bases. Just to off, you know, and again, it's up to the zoning board of appeals on the wording. Uh we can follow through if you, on that. You know, I, again, I would uh uh say it's based, first of all, that the, the variance is to enclose the upper level as a three-season room, subject to the plans as submitted. And any further changes to that three-season room uh may be subject to um zoning board of appeals approval. That would be the first. And then the second condition, the lower area of the deck shall not be enclosed unless uh approved by the zoning board of appeals.
That's a much more elegant way of saying it and gets to where we want it to be.
Yeah. I would agree with that. You have, you had, you have the thoughts though, Brian, you had, you were there. You were there, we just needed the verbiage from Director Kieselbach. All right. Um, okay, this is a motion to approve. Trustee Opsmer.
I will second the motion.
Okay, and we have support from Trustee Opsmer. Um any discussion on that?
Um, one, one of those said no electrical and there is going to be a ceiling fan. Just thought I'd be open about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that's in the plans as submitted, right?
Yes.
Right, and I don't, you know, a ceiling fan, uh outlets for lights, that's not it. I don't believe that's an issue for us.
I, I think that, to, to clarify, I think that my, my concern is running HVAC and plumbing or any kind of other um uh building permit or, you know, permit that would cause it to be livable space versus a enclosed porch. Um so that, so it
I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. Like, like the Director Kieselbach said, that's in the, that's in the plans as submitted, which is now the condition.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and with that, we have a second from uh Trustee Opsmer. Um any other discussion um from the board here on those, on this motion? Before we go to a vote? I mean, I will just say that I can make a very, very loose case for using the property as, as, as fully as possible, being the permitted person, purpose. So not just the very uh bare bones interpretation that, that a residence is for living inside of, and that's that. Because, you know, the exterior of the property is also um or she, she owns the exterior of the property as well. And I, I can, I can wiggle my way there to um accepting that criteria four can be can, I can accept criteria four with the idea that using the entire property, meaning using the deck that is already existing and enclosing it so that it can be used as much as possible, um I can get there. So I, I can, I can very much um agree with this motion. I, I think that, like, Member Shorkey said, this is the most divided I've seen. But um we're going to go to a vote unless we have more discussion. Anybody else have anything to add? All right, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and this is a vote to approve the motion as amended by Member Shorkey with the um wonderful language of Director Kieselbach, that the lower, lower area will not be enclosed and also that the upper area remain as um as the plans designated now, without the addition of, with any other additional uh without any other additions. Uh and any other, any other additions to this plan or to this structure would need to come back before the ZBA to be approved. So uh let's see, where's my, where's my voting list? Here we go. Okay, Member Shorkey.
Yes.
Trustee Opsmer?
Yes.
Member Newman?
Yes.
Member Kohanek?
No.
And the chair votes yes. So your variance has been approved with some very strict uh criteria. So I do, um, I do thank you for being patient with us and allowing us to go through our process. Um I do want to just remind you that we, um, you know, it's, it's not a personal, it's not a personal reason, this is just strictly because we have to make sure that these, that these variances are, are very carefully considered. And also that they um stay within the scope of what um is in the um interest of the, the ordinance and the chapter, so.
Well, I would like to thank you all.
Yeah.
That was fascinating discussion. I have no problem with the exceptions. I do not intend to build under that and I did not intend it to be a four-season room. I just want to be away from the mosquitoes and um to enjoy life. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, well, enjoy, enjoy your uh, your new enclosed porch.
Thank you.
And thank, thank you for being here and being uh open to our questions this evening. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this case tonight? I will uh allow Home TV to step in here.
Do I leave now?
Um, yes, you are all set.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamell. Have a good night.
Can, of course, take public comment at five one seven three four nine one two three two. Uh and you do have somebody in the attendee area who has raised their hand.
Okay.
Uh they have been unable to speak and they will need to unmute. Uh we ask that they please begin their comment with uh their name and address for the public record. Uh and I'm still seeing you muted, so.
Here we go.
Okay, I am a reporting intern with Home TV and I just was assigned this to kind of just attend it, write an article, and um my name is Brianna Azior, address two oh seven Collingwood Drive. And I know nothing about zoning none of this. So this has been very interesting for me, a little confusing, but um I just wanted to ask. So I was under, I know the reasoning for why it was such a debate, but I just wanted to be clear. Um if it is an open porch like she has now, it, there is no kind of like, you know, restriction for how far it has to be from the end of the property. Is there like any kind of rules for that or is it just for if it's an enclosed type thing, it has to be the thirty feet or whatever it was?
I think I will give that over, I was going to say, I think I will give that over to Director Kieselbach, who is our ordinance master for Meridian Township. Thank you for the question.
Yeah, again, what the, in this case, where the house sits is the issue for the rear yard setbacks. Uh the minimum that they have to meet is thirty feet. They could always have a larger rear yard if they had additional property or moved the house. The ordinance says if the house is built at thirty feet, so it meets that setback, you're allowed to extend a deck or the ordinance says encroach into that area for an open deck, eight feet. So you, you can use part of that for a larger deck. In this case, um you see it did already encroach and, and it wasn't a, uh, it was in compliance as an, as an open deck. Uh but when you enclose it, then it's considered part of the principal structure of the house and has to meet that um setback of thirty feet.
Okay, I, yeah, I just wanted to clarify what the actual um feet footage was that they could have with the open deck. So the reason it was okay previously was because it was within that eight-feet encroachment from the thirty feet.
They could have, they could have up to eight feet. If they had a, a larger rear yard, they could have a bigger deck.
Got it. Okay, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Well, thank you for your question. We appreciate you being here and sitting through the meeting and hopefully some, you learned something new. We, I learned, I know I learned something new tonight, so.
Yes, I knew nothing about any of this. Definitely all been informative.
Yeah, good, good. We're glad you're here. Um and thank you for coming. Is there anybody else that has any uh questions for the board or any other comments? If not, I will close public comment. Okay. And um we can go into uh any uh board comments if, if the board wants to say anything. And, and let me just be the first to say, welcome to our newest um alternate member, uh Mr. Newman. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight and I'm, I'm glad to hear that you're in construction. I think that's a really uh strong perspective to have, one that I don't have. I, I do a lot of stuff to my house, but I don't do it by myself. So it's nice to have some perspective there. Um and I also wanted to thank Don, because I know uh, like you said, Don, you know, we, we try to, try to come on the same page, we're not always, but I respect your, your um input and, and your value on the board. And I, I thank all of you for having a, a um good and very thoughtful discussion and, and debate this evening. Yeah, with that, anybody else have anything to add tonight? All right, well, uh we will see you all. I don't know, uh Keith, if we have anything coming up for the end of the month or for April, but um
I don't have anything at the moment, so.
All right. Well, in that case, we'll see you soon. We'll see you when we see you. And everybody have a good evening and, and enjoy taking, enjoy the solo parenting, uh Trustee Opsmer. I'm going to have to go bribe mine with candy right now, because they were really quiet for the, for the bulk of the meeting, so. All right, everyone.
You gotta go.
Hi, everyone.
Yep, enjoy the rest of your evening and all that good weather out there. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.